Money wisely. I just can't see you giving away, abating rather, a lot of money to these people when they're already getting a 25% tax credit. So I would ask you to look at this very closely, perhaps form a committee to study it before you commit to approving any of these abatements for these solar farms. They're proliferating everywhere. And one other thing I want to say is Chapter 313, that's the school limitation. That law expires this year. So all these corporations, they're rushing in everywhere they can to try to get these agreements signed. And the schools, a lot of them are going for it. They just, I don't understand it, but they're being offered money and they're taking it and they're signing it. And they've committed for it. But after January, after 12/31 of this year, there's not going to be any more 313s. So, but there is what's called a 312, and that's the agreement that you guys have to consider. When these, you know, when they come to you, don't just take, I'm just, you know, please just don't take the first offer. And I recommend that you not bait them at all, because we all pay taxes on our homes and our businesses. Nobody gives us any big breaks. I mean, why should these solar companies get, you know, get these kind of tax breaks?
We're gonna have a forum on Thursday. I would invite you to come back.
Oh, well, thank you.
You'll have all the time you want to speak.
Oh, well, I don't mean to take more of your time. I appreciate it. But this is just something that's too important. Don't leave millions of dollars of tax money on the table. You know what I mean? So, but anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Thank you. We'll move into our consent agenda. We have six pullouts. Highway Garage, $270. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One abstention.
Page 15, Commissioner Morales, $539.37. Motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One abstention.
Motion carries. Goliad Auto Parts, $1,527.63. Motion to approve, please.
Motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, abstain.
Motion carries. Highway Garage, $298. Motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One abstention.
Motion carries. Commissioner Edwards, $448.11. Motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, abstain.
Motion carries. Commissioner Bruins, $638.82. Motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sorry about that.
Motion carries.
Abstain.
The remainder of the consent agenda, questions? Otherwise, need a motion to approve, please.
Go ahead. You got a question?
I've got a question on, uh, it's right near the back. On page 29, it shows, it shows precinct one with the bill to Vulcan Construction for $17,810. Every one of these is the exact same amount of tonnage, which is pretty unusual. And I've having ordered eight loads in the last month of patch material, although I could use it, but I didn't order that much. So I don't know what could have happened on this one. But it's coded to me.
Who's the voter?
Sir?
Who's the voter?
Vulcan. Vulcan material.
The patching material.
It looks like it's the same, it's the same amount eight times, exactly. And that's pretty hard to do, loading trucks.
Unless they have an automatic shut off of some sort when it hits that number.
I've never seen that before.
I understand.
And on, uh, on page four, Brandon Paving Company, for the $26,561. Is that the, the, is that for the, for the continuation of Perez Road that, that the grant money was short on and I picked up? Because I've, I coded it to my code, but it's not coded to me. It's, it's coded 67150505.
Do you think they're going to pay it?
Well, I, I don't have the money to pay it. If you can find a way to, I mean, I'm, I'm not complaining. I just want to make sure we're not paying it twice, Rusty, just, just to make sure.
I can kind of remember two checks written to them already. They did that up there in La Bahia area to the, to the dump. Is that the road they did? To the dump up there?
Yes, Perez Road.
Yeah, I remember two checks we've already approved for them a while back.
If you have any questions on this bill, I would ask you to go forward and give me a minute.
Is that all the questions you had, sir?
Yeah.
So let's prove, let's approve the consent agenda.
Oh.
With, without those two items, and we'll...
Okay. I've got one more thing, though.
Yes, sir?
On the last month, the last meeting, we approved that House Bill 2073.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, it's come to my attention that in the, in the minutes that were, it's going to be recorded, it's a little confusion. There's, there's a bill that, that I thought we were approving. And then there's a, a, another form of that same policy that's a little different from what we approved.
That's in regard to first responders and paid leave?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. This one has it where supervisor may not order quarantine. The one I, the one I was approving says the supervisor can order. And this one says that they can't, they have to, off-duty exposures will not be covered. To be eligible, an employee must identify this, the source of it. This one doesn't say it quite that way.
Okay.
So what I'd like to do is, is if this is the one everyone voted on, then I guess I'd like to everybody...
Well, I'm sure there's only one House bill with that number on it.
Yes, sir. But there's, we got two versions in the...
I think that one that you, that you had first has something that said about a city. We're not part of the city. If you'll read into that, that first one that you had.
The one that, the one that was in the first, first meeting.
Right. That got, that got put in, what did they call that, uh, what is McNeil called?
It was in the packet.
What does McNeil called the, uh...
Medical director.
Medical director.
Right.
Well...
But it got into the packet that they're gonna...
Right. It's that one that you're talking about that leaves the supervisor with authority to approve, not the one you approved.
This one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So do we, do you, to avoid confusion in the future, I'm just asking the court while we're doing this, do you think it'd be a good idea?
That one I brought to you, I found out that that was put in y'all's packet, the wrong one. And those I brought to you the day of court.
Right, right.
So they were supposed to supersede the one that was put in the packet.
So we just need to make sure this is one...
That's the one you approved. It lets the supervisor, uh, make the decision on putting them in quarantine and getting paid.
So are you gonna go, are you gonna take care of getting this one out?
You approved the one that you have in your left hand.
Okay. That's all I wanted, to make sure.
All right. So you want to make a motion on the consent agenda?
Sure.
All right.
After the, what we decided to do with this one and, and taking those two out until we, I talked with Rusty about that, um, I will make the motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Need a second on that, please?
I'll second it with those amendments that he's requesting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve agreement for court collection services between Goliad County and Graves Humphreys Stall LTD. Melinda is not here. This is the same contract. This is simply because she's the new JP. It's the same contract we've been using. And it's for her collection on her unpaid fines and tickets.
Okay.
So you're saying this is, this is already...
This is the same one that's been used.
And because she's the new judge, that she needs to be, she needs to be assigned runner, too?
Correct.
Okay. I make the motion that we approve this agreement with court collection service between Goliad County and Graves Humphreys Stall LTD.
Need a second on that, please?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, approve reappointment of Shirley McMillan to the Gulf Bend Centers Board of Trustees. I have a letter from Jeffrey Tunnel, the director, and the first paragraph, this letter is written respectfully, respectfully requests the Commissioners Court consideration of the reappointment of Shirley McMillan for another two-year term, April 20, 22 to April 2024, to the Gulf Bend Center Board of Trustees. Her current appointment expires in 2022. I'd like to have a motion to approve that appointment, please.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Several court sessions ago, we approved allowing Texas workforce solutions to get out of their contract. They were gonna begin the program of, of using a mobile unit. Well, we live in a changing world. I'll read this brief letter. Judge Bennett, on February 23rd, I sent you a request to terminate our agreement to lease space located at 329 West Franklin Street, effective within 30 days. Since my, since then, my office has received information that warrants reconsidered, reconsideration of our initial request. On March 28th, we received notice that the Deveraux Behavior Health Center in Victoria County would close several of its programs at its Victoria facility, affecting the employment of approximately 122 employees. This closure would have an impact on a number of Goliad citizens who have worked at that location. For that reason, as well as the concern, the concerns we receive from numerous Goliad citizens, residents, we would like to withdraw our request to terminate the lease. Please let me know if you need any additional information required, further discussion. Thank you. Henry Gohardo. So, Deveraux is closing, and there will be some people that are affected by that. I know several that work out there. And he's requesting that they're allowed to keep their space until he can get it figured out. Comments?
He had said last meeting, Judge, that you were, talked to him on the phone, and that he advised the same, he didn't say anything different on the phone that you talked, the conversation you had with him on the phone?
What would be your recommendation?
Let him have the lease back. I said, let him agree to have it, have it back like it was.
Commissioner Edwards?
I had a visit with, with Mr. Gora Harold, too, and he indicated to me that all he really needed was one office space, a 12 by 12 room is what his numbers, what he just kind of threw out there, that he didn't need everything back. So, um, that's, that's, uh, that's what he, that's what he told me over the phone after he had found out all this. So, I mean, I'd like to see him stay here, and I think we can, we can make it all work if, and he's willing to help us in, in, you know, in our situation of trying to find offices for everyone that, combined with the mobile unit that he has and the office space for one, one, one secretary, we should be able to fit something in. I don't know, the, the current contract, you know, it's, it's pretty broad on how much he has. So, uh, I don't know how we, either we do another contract or just based on, on what he said, you know, to us, that we, he was willing to just take one, one office. Um, I'd be totally in favor of it.
Commissioner, what do you have to say? Mr. Brumby?
I, I would like to see the workforce. I think they've done good work in the past, and I would, I would like them to be able to come back and, and help not just the Deveraux folks, but whoever else needs help to find, to find work. So I'm certainly for allowing them to have a lease.
Commissioner Bruins?
Well, I've seen him work out of the truck also downtown here, but I would think he would have showed up if he was, where's he at? I mean, if he wants to keep his office, I mean, you would think he'd come and talk to us about it.
Well, he wrote it.
I'm not against giving him an office, but I would think he'd came and answered some questions maybe and stuff.
My view of it is...
Or maybe how much room and stuff he needs.
We prob, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. About how much room he needs and things like that, so.
My impression of it is, is we need to see what it's going to take to rec, uh, fill their needs, and then we can make a decision in the next, in the next Commissioner Court. I mean, let's see what he really needs. And then we can, once we know, then we can put it into a contract and make a deal. But rather than, well, I think he only needs this, and he may need that, you know, let's just see what he needs. He did not indicate to me, he, he told me that he didn't think the mobile unit was going to work well. So that creates a need for more than one office. That creates a need for the big room and one office at the minimum. So why don't we do that? Why don't we just sit down with him and have a talk and figure it out?
Well, that's what I was alluding to on your, if you had, with your conversation with him over the phone, if he needed one room, two rooms, whatever, you know, I don't want to, we need him here, yes, I agree, we need him here, but, or that, that office that...
So I'd like to make a motion to table this until the next meeting. If I can get a second, we'll talk.
I'll second that.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approve the order prohibiting outside burning. My phone was ringing off the wall from the state and others to do something. So we put it in, and we need Commissioners Court to approve that or not.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have a problem with it at all.
Is that a motion?
To, uh, the only question I would have is, are we gonna allow any, on, any, uh, permits under these exceptions that are listed here on the, on the order?
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand.
Are we gonna have any permits allowed, or are we gonna allow permits to burn under these?
Not with the kind of wind we had yesterday.
Well, I know, but under these circumstances that are here in the order?
I don't know who approves burning, uh, during the burn ban. I'm guessing I'm talking to them.
Yes, you are, because I have done it in the past.
So...
That's what I'm, that, my question is, you know, are you gonna allow those permits like before?
I think when we can get...
According to court, according to how, you know, depending on what the weather is that particular day.
I think when we can get our fire marshal lined up, that he'll take those duties from you. That's what I think. It's not what I know, but that's what I think. But in the meantime, we do need to look at the question at hand. Do we want to approve the burn ban and keep it in place for now?
I'm not against it, no, sir.
I, so I have people that know people do dozing, things like that. They're, we've given them the permits before, as well as myself have gotten permits to burn during a burn ban, uh, with the approval of, of, uh, Commissioner Morales, of course, he, he was the one that's overseeing all that. I have people that call me, well, what about, you know, burden feed sacks? They see me burning feed sacks in the morning, or are they gonna come up there and give me a ticket? So what, you know, there's a lot of people. There again, how many fires have we had where people have thrown a match? And how many have we had where they're driving down the highway? And I'm not against a burn ban, but we, we do have to allow people to do their jobs, uh, whether it be through the permitting system or whatever.
I agree with that. Having said that, the wind's been blowing fifteen to twenty for a long time.
Right.
So let's go ahead and talk about the burn bans specifically, and then we can address the, uh, the permits. But if I can get a motion to keep it in place, I believe you've done that already. Can I get a second?
I'll second it, but I wanna, I wanna say I've got the same kind of phone calls that David's been getting from ranchers that need to burn feed sacks. And, you know, I hate to tell anybody what they can do on their own property, and I don't want to do that. But I have had, I have told them, you know, you're responsible for that fire. And if you set it off in a 40 mile an hour wind, you're gonna get more than a slap on the wrist, if you ask me, if we have to come out there with a bunch of our firefighters to put out, or 10 acres or whatever it goes to. So I think it has to be a little responsibility on everyone's part here.
I agree.
And with that, I, I, I'll make the, I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have, uh, the approval of enrollment of all county elected officials and county employees who have access to county computer system or database in the mandatory cybersecurity program as required by the Texas Government Code 20545191, offered at no cost by the Texas Association of Counties. It's, uh, the same thing we did a year ago. I don't think it's a choice. We just have to approve it as a court. Need a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Judge.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, discussion action on having an outside audit.
Yes, sir.
Just a second, sir.
Okay. As, as y'all have, excuse me, as y'all have done, approved previously, we thought we were gonna use Harrison Waldrook and Uheric as the next outside, for the next outside audit. Well, due to COVID, staff shortages, they have just, they have come back and said they really don't want to do it. I've called Roloff, and I'm not familiar with their full name, but the first part of the name is Roloff. They're, they used to do the county's outside audit years ago. And they have agreed to give us a proposal. But I'm certainly in favor and intend to do an audit from night, from 2019 forward. Yes, sir.
Yeah, that, I just, we hadn't had an audit in the last two years, and I just, we did the checks and balance.
No, no, we need an outside audit. I am a firm believer in that, and we will have one.
And I, I believe the other entities have gotten audits, so I just...
No, and the grants as well will be audited, and probably a full scope audit because of the dollars that we have spent.
So, so you're waiting, you're waiting on them to give...
They're gonna give us proposals, bring to y'all to approve.
And how soon is that gonna happen?
I beg your pardon?
How soon are they gonna have the proposal prepared?
Oh, I would think my next Commissioners Court.
Okay.
No, it needs to be done. I'm, I'm, I will say, it needs to be done as soon as possible.
Thank you. I just had that question.
Well, no, that's fine.
Do you have anything else, Commissioner?
No, sir. That's just...
All right.
Answered every bit of it.
Anyone have anything else further?
No, sir.
All right.
Can I say something else? Do y'all want to go back prior to 2019? The last outside audit this county had done was 2016.
I know.
Okay. What about 17 and 18?
Well, we did the...
Oh, that was, that was nothing but a balance sheet audit.
Right, exactly. They, but they talked like everything was so messed up that they couldn't, they couldn't do the, the rest of it. So what, what do we do? I mean, we, we need to do everything correct. I agree. But how do you, uh...
I'm just asking the question. It's up to y'all to decide. I mean, at least since I've been here in 2019, I want to get one done, and it'll get done.
I would think if they, yeah, if they need to go back that far, yeah, of course. Because, yeah, that last checks and balance, that was for three years, I believe, and it, it wasn't much. I mean, it wasn't a complete audit, in other words.
No. And we knew that going in. It was nothing but a balance sheet audit.
Right, right. But I thought we had discussed then that, with the way, the situation of everything, that they couldn't, that they couldn't do.
Well, let me, let me tell you this. We really have no records of our fixed assets in this county since 2016. So we're having, we're gonna have to go back and recreate every acquisition and every disposal of each asset item. I know Lee has visited with some of y'all and, and reviewed your assets. And there's some that y'all say y'all don't have. And some of these are pretty large amounts.
Well, you were at my yard and did it last year, you and Brian.
No, no.
And we, we dotted every I and crossed every T.
I'm not saying it was you necessarily. Hear me out.
And you, and...
No, no, no.
And the stuff that I got on the email, still ain't clear.
And I put, and I put those items that you said that Kenneth had, I've changed it. Probably shouldn't have until Kenneth confirmed it, but I did change them.
Yeah, just one tractor.
Well, we, we're missing a tractor, not necessarily from you. And I'm not standing up here to embarrass anybody or make anyone look bad, but we need to find out where it went. And I'll be getting with that Commissioner. But it's not just, it's not just y'all four.
But we did a complete audit in my yard last year.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Anyway, y'all have any questions, comments?
Do, do we need to say something about going back to 16?
I, I...
That's a choice.
I just wanted to get y'all's opinion of what y'all wanted to do.
Mm-hmm.
I definitely, I don't want to budge from the nineteen, from 19 forward.
Well, if they can give us a price on what it would, because I think that's what it was running into, is a very expensive audit.
Wait a minute, nah.
I know, I get you.
I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna tell them, they have to dot every I and cross every T.
I know. I know what you're gonna...
And, and it's gonna be expensive as it is.
Yes. And we had talked about doing it back then, and then we just...
No, we had talked about a forensic audit, and that's hundreds of, that'd be over $100,000. There were some cer, those certain transactions.
I would think give them, uh, give them, give us a price of going, going back to that, to that point.
Okay. But we're gonna do 19, 20, and 21 first.
Excellent.
So I want to tell you that. I want those done first.
And there again, most of their problem was software, the software, right? And it's still, we're...
The software is even worse today than it was last Commissioners Court. Just give me, let me give you an example. I went to run a trial balance. Everybody knows what a trial balance is. 66 pages. And what it did was, it put each page in a separate tab. So I would have to print each page separately to get one trial balance. And it wasn't like that two or three weeks ago. It was not like that.
Where should we go?
Where are we at on the new software?
They have had a change in personnel. So we're gonna get handed off to someone else at Tyler.
Any timeframe of when we're gonna be able to get the new software? Any timeframe of when we're gonna be able to get the new software installed and engaged?
Until we get all of our funds set up, because right now, we don't have enough space in Southern software to set up the funds that we need. The state has established additional funds that District Clerk and the JPs are required to collect. We don't have room. I've asked them to give us a quote on what it'll take to change it from two digits to three digits. I haven't got a response. I talked to them today, and I said, because they told me they'd have that to me a week or so ago, and I haven't gotten anything.
Is this the new company or the, or the Sou, Southern?
This is Southern.
Oh.
You were asking about, we've got to get a chart of accounts, and we've got all our funds set up before we start any implementation.
We'll never get it done, if they can't do it, it'll never.
No, no, no. It's just the people we're dealing with.
I know.
They're, they're not responsive, but we're, we're stuck with it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, what do we want to do here? You've given us a. So, we'll take no action, and you'll bring us a proposal in two weeks?
Do you want to table it, or just?
We'll table it until the next meeting, then.
Okay.
All right. Discussion action in regard to TexDOT to replace Post Oak Low Water Bridge. Commissioner Brumby.
Yes, sir, I got a call from TexDOT about replacing the bridge at the, near seventeen twenty-six, to replace that bridge. Of course, it'll take several years to do that, but I felt like I needed to bring this to the court. That's step one, I believe. It's probably take until two thousand and twenty-five at the earliest before it could be done, so I just wanted to bring it to court to say that the TexDOT wants to replace that, and I'm, I'm all for it. It's, it is a low water crossing, I've seen the water over that bridge on several occasions, so it'd be nice, and it's underneath part is, according to the pictures I saw, they're not, it's, it's not as bad as the Frankie, Frankie Road Bridge, but it's, it does need repair. So, I just wanted to bring that to attention of the commissioner's court.
I don't, I don't think the commissioner's court has taken any action on this.
I don't think so either, I just wanted to make sure that it was brought, I'm new at this, the first one I've done, so I just wanted to make sure all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted.
All right, we'll take no action. Item number ten, discussion action regarding local government code forty-three one oh six as it applies to county roads that adjoin city annexed property. Commissioner Brumby?
But I, I, I get some of the, the work done by other commissioners, talking to Jim Allison, and I, I read one, this is, this is a question from a Deff, Deff Smith County Commissioner. If a city incorporates property on one side of a roadway and the county has the other side, who is responsible for the maintenance of the roadway? That was back in, I'm not sure the time period on that, but Jim Allison responded to that by saying, under section forty-three point one oh six, local government code, if a city annexes property adjacent to the county road, it must also annex the county road right away and assume responsibility for maintenance of that portion of the road. So, what I did after reading that, I thought, whoa, Goliad County has got some roads that actually join the county roads. Some of them are in precinct three and, and precinct two, and also precinct one, I don't think precinct four comes that close, but precinct one, two, and three have roads that the city adjoins, their property touches on one side or the other of the road. And I'm just, according to the law, we are, the, the city is supposed to maintain those, they're supposed to mow the grass, trim the limbs, and pave the road. And I just kind of wanted to, to know where we should go with this to the city and see what our responsibility is. According to, to this code, state statute says the city is responsible, and the city needs to maintain those roads. So, I'm just concerned that, I know I have been, precinct three has been doing roadwork on technically now city roads for quite a while. Ward, Ward Street, Minnehula, or, or at least two of them. I think Ballpark Road probably is one, there's several, several of these that, that are, are can, should be city roads and city maintained. So, I just kind of, I'm asking the, the court what we should do, how we should do this. So, I'm just, I'm just coming with the information to see what we need to do. Jim Allison is the expert on, on TAC, Texas Association of Counties, and so I'm, I'm assuming he has researched this, and this is the way it should be.
I, I think it's important not to confuse who owns the property that's adjacent to these roads that we're talking about, but rather, if it falls within the city limits, that's the question. It doesn't matter, for instance, out at the auditorium, it doesn't matter that the city and the county both own the property where the fairgrounds sit, the auditorium sits, it's whether or not that's within the city limits of Goliad, Texas. And we've checked it a number of different ways, and it is. So, the road that runs behind the fairgrounds, and all the roads contained at the fairgrounds, according to what we've read here, is the responsibility of the city of Goliad and not the county of Goliad. It's very clear. That would include resurfacing roads, mowing rightaways, maintaining ditches, all the above. So, what was your purpose?
Well, because I have several of these streets in my precinct, and I have been taking care of them, I just want, I, I do not want to break the law. I, I think we probably should go to the city and confront them and tell them that we've been taking care of your roads now, several of your roads for many years, and that it's now time for you to take charge of them, because the county legally cannot maintain those roads. So, my, my, the reason why I brought this is that I think that we're, I, I don't want us to get into a, a legal battle with the city, but I think the city owns these roads and rightaways, and they need to take care of them, and, and according to the statute, we, we're, we're not supposed to, we're not supposed to maintain them. I want the city to take care of these roads and not the county.
Does anyone have a comment on that?
Well, right before I got in, the state had come in and identified county roads, and, and took a lot of the old non-used roads off of the list, and, and then named the county roads that, that were in the precincts, and, I mean.
Well, for example, the road that runs behind the auditorium, the houses on the backside get city water.
Right.
So, that's clearly the response, that road is clearly the responsibility of the city of Goliad. Because it says if they annex up to the road, they're responsible for the entire road.
Well, well, not, not always, they, there are people that get city water that are, are not.
Well, let me put it another way, then, I have a map that's about four foot square, and the red dotted line goes through the area that I'm speaking of, behind the area that I'm speaking of.
I know a Minnehula or Minneway Road, yeah, Mickey would not mow that south ditch, he would only mow the north ditch.
According to this, they're not, he's not supposed to mow either one of them, nor is he supposed to patch them. And my concern is, is if it's against the law for the county precincts to do this, we're spending county tax dollars to do something that the city is, is responsible for. And the city is a taxing agency, and they have the, they, they should have the ability and the expertise to be able to do this. It's just that we were confused, perhaps, but now that Jim Allison has been asked by this commissioner in Deff Smith County, it's clear to me that we are doing things that we're not supposed to do.
But, but there again, the state, I would get with the state, I know Jim Allison has given you that answer, but there might be other requirements. They gave us a list of our county roads, so.
Well, I, I'm just saying, this clearly states, the statute, local government code forty-three point one oh six, and this is of the local government code title two, subtitle C, chapter forty-three, municipal annexation. And the city should know that if they've annexed it, it's their road. Yes, sir, it does, as a matter of fact, twenty, at the bottom here says Acts twenty-fifteen eighty-fourth legislative, and it's got that in here, chapter ten fifty-two, House Bill nineteen forty-nine, section two, effective September one, two thousand and fifteen. So.
I'd recommend that one of the commissioners call TAC and get a clarification on that, because the way I'm reading it, it's pretty clear, but I'm not an attorney.
Well, twenty fifteen is after.
Sir?
Twenty fifteen is after the, the, the list that they made.
Right.
Just so y'all know, Ken Paxton wrote an opinion on October twenty-first.
Ken Paxton did write an opinion on this on October twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, which states just what he's saying. And here's the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, eighty-six legislature, they passed House Bill three forty-seven, which actually says what you're saying, too. So, I mean, it's a, it's a catch twenty-two either way, but I see what you're saying. Because it's at the time they annex that, they're supposed to immediately give all the municipalities, police, fire, emergency, solid waste, they're supposed to do everything at that time. So, you're correct.
So, I would recommend that someone double back with TAC, or we can contact Mr. Cullen and get an opinion, but it's, if that's the law, that's the law.
Well, I'm, I'm saying, Jim Allison's already reviewed this, as far as I'm concerned, he's already said it's, it's the city's. So, I'm, I'm, I think it would be, and he's number one attorney for TAC, so I'm, I'm not sure why we'd want to call him again, I mean, he's already got it in black and white right here. So, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to, I will contact him, because I'm the one that, that saw this and brought this up, so I'm happy to call him, or call TAC and see if I can get a, another opinion, but I'm sure he's gonna say, here it is, and he can, he may refer to Paxton's Attorney General's opinion, too. So, I, I think we, I think we probably need to go to the, the city needs to be contacted about this, too. I think we need to, I, I mean, we, we can fight all we want here, we can discuss all we want here, but the city is the one that needs to be also in on this, and they need to take responsibility for their, their roads and, and rightaways.
I don't know what loophole they can find to avoid working on these roads and rightaways, it seems crystal clear to me, but to give them the benefit of the doubt, I can check with Mr. Cullen and get a written opinion on it and bring it to court next time.
Okay, and, and that would be fine, but I also think we need to take it to the city and have their city attorney also perhaps look at it.
That's fine.
And let them, let them get an opinion also, because it's gonna, it's gonna affect them also. And it is a little spotty on, for example, Ward Street, right there at one eighty-three, is, is a county road, but down toward the school, it's not a county, it, I mean, it's a, it's a city road. Mr. Borth's house is not in the city, it's, for whatever reason, he got his house right there at the corner, is not in the city. So, that for, therefore, that is a county road right there by the Baptist, First Baptist Church. So, I mean, it's, it's a weird, it, the whole thing is sort of strange, and, but, but I think the city needs to be contacted, I think the city's attorney needs to get.
I think if you read this closer, it says that the municipality is responsible for that portion of the road that they've annexed up to.
That's exactly right.
Doesn't mean it's the whole road.
I know, correct.
All right.
And I'm, I'm just pointing out that I know that that is, that would be a county portion right there, it's not the city road.
Okay. So, who would like to take this to the city to get the final determination on what they think?
The man who brought it up.
I guess I'll have to take it to the city, then. I'm happy to take it to the city.
Why don't you do that, and we'll, we'll table it, and we'll talk about what you discovered the next go-around, and I can ask Mr. Cullen, and hopefully we'll have it all ironed out.
So, you will.
It seems clear to me.
Yeah, you talk to Mr. Cullen, go and get, get, get another opinion besides Mr. Allison's.
Belt and suspenders. It's always better to.
Have two.
To have two.
Don't lose your drawers, okay? Thank you.
All right, so we will table this. Ms. Schultz is gonna bring us a report on the primary and canvas results accepted by the Secretary of State.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. I probably should have had this sooner to you, but as time goes by, it's here now. And if I seem a little bit nervous, it's because I am, because there's some other things on my mind tonight. But I do want to make aware that the unofficial results of the Republican primary in Goliad County was accepted and certified by the Secretary of State, so we really don't have any problems there. Are there any questions? If not, I just want to share that we did have a canvas March the tenth of, with Norma, myself, and several of the public were there, and they heard how this was done. So, Norma reads everything off that she has, and I read everything off that I have as far as the Republican primary, and it all verified, sent to Secretary of State. We received no indication that it was not correct, so I wanted to verify that with you. And speaking of Norma, she could not be here tonight, but I want to share with you that she's doing a great job. Would everyone please give her a pat on the back or tell her thank you, she's, she's doing a great job, and I've had a, enjoy working with her, she's just a great lady. And so, with that being said, I want to remind you guys that the primary is coming at May twenty-fourth. And with that being said, also, I'm sorry, but I do have some issues, and maybe the county's not aware of this and how it works. If you have a candidate that files as a Republican but votes as a Democrat, I am required to take that application, but am by no means bound by any rule or statute to remain silent about what I know. In that case, I want some people in this county to know, these are a few things that need to be said, I feel. When we vote Republican, we expect a Republican on our ballot. In this election, there are Democrats running as Republicans, but Republican, Democrats cannot win in Goliad County if they don't go Republican. And let me tell the voters this, don't let Democrats running as Republicans get away with lying to you, vote for the real Republican. And one last issue that was brought to my attention. If you can't beat them, join them, I feel should be the Democratic motto in Goliad County. We can't let them steal our elections or resort to lying about who they really are. And may I say one thing? Judge Bennett was elected in the primary, proof, it's done. And I think some of the people in this county, and myself as Republican County Chair, we are sick and tired of some people criticizing and saying things that are unnecessary. Don't, you don't have the right to take another person's inventory or judge their character. If that's all you have to do, then please find something else to do. And with that, I thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Need a motion to approve the canvas that she presented just now?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public announcements?
Thank you, everyone, I would just like to announce that the, uh, Spirit of Goliad Republican Women will meet tomorrow at twelve noon at the Depot, and all are invited. We have a slight luncheon, we meet from, at, starting at twelve, and all are welcome. Thank you.
Need a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved, Judge.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Opposed? We adjourn. Thank you.